Good evening and welcome to the December 5, 2024 Northampton County Council Meeting. I've asked Mr. Gafredo to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I ask for a moment of silence? Thank you. Could you call the roll, please, Ms. Shavniski? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Kupora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gafredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present except Mr. Heckman. Thank you. Next, can we have an approval of the minutes, November 21, 2024, and the November 6, 2024 budget hearing? Oh. In the better late than never, welcome Ron Heckman. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Next, we have courtesy of the floor. I have one person signed up. Please state your name and the city where you reside, and you have five minutes. We have Mr. Stephen J. Barron.
I would like to make sure council has this. I'm going to just read it into the record. This is dated November 27, so my last evening part was after the budget hearing on that day. So last evening at the county council committee hearing on budget amendments, the Northampton County Council proposed seven budget amendments, six of which moved forward. These amendments fall into three categories, and the results of these changes is an unbalanced budget, which does not comply with the Northampton County Home Rule Charter. The three categories of amendments are balanced changes, unbalanced changes, and incomplete amendments. The balanced amendments: All three of Councilman Giovanni's amendments to the proposed 2025 budget are balanced. While the administration did not originally propose these funding awards, and we believe that the competitive process is best, as it allows for equal evaluation of all projects for a specific year, we believe that these amendments are balanced. Although it is not clear whether the future grant funds identified have already been received or will be received in 2025, Mr. Giovanni identified a specific line item to cut and provided directives for where he expects the money to go. Therefore, the funding for the Bangor's 150th anniversary, the funding for the Bath Firehouse generator, and the funding for the tool upgrades at the Columbia Firehouse are considered balanced. Amendments that cause an unbalanced budget: A. A cut of 2.5% from all departments equally to fund the P-25 upgrades. The original cut was reported to be approximately $3.3 million. However, that number in the original proposal was inaccurate. Mr. Gafredo was using a subtotal that did not include transfers to other programs. Instead of using the subtotal, he should have used the total of $116.4 million, as opposed to $126.6 million, which means that his cuts amount to a total of $2.9 million. While this cut, along with the movement of those funds to a reserve account for P-25, shifts the funds and keeps the overall county budget in balance, it does not take into account the special revenue funds passed to the county for a specific purpose. To truly balance the budget legally, the councilman would need to provide a specific list as to how he plans on balancing those special revenue funds, which has not been provided, unlike Mr. Giovanni's amendments where specific line items were addressed. Until that detail is provided, the budget is unbalanced within the special revenue funds and therefore would not be balanced overall, considering the rules, encumbrances, and roles that occur as part of the day-to-day operations of the county and the core function that employees are tasked with daily. B. A cut of $5 million from county budget to place back into the County Emergency Stabilization Fund. This amendment adds $5 million to the County Emergency Stabilization Fund. An ordinance created this fund and must remain between 5% and 15% of the county's general fund revenues to provide for emergencies. In 2025, the 2025 proposed budget, the Northampton County Executive lowered this amount from $18.3 million to $8.03 million, which puts the fund at 5.6% of the county's general fund expenditures and transfers out. The proposed 2025 county budget follows the ordinance passed by council in 2015, which was amended in 2018. While Mr. Brown's proposal to add $5 million to the fund received the council's votes, the amendment does not address the cuts he wishes to make to the budget expenditures. Therefore, it causes the overall county budget and several special revenue funds that require county funds to be transferred to balance out to be out of balance. It also should be pointed out that this amendment was moved forward with only four members of the council voting to add it to the budget. This is not a majority of council, and before inclusion, that issue should be reviewed. Incomplete amendment: The final amendment to address is the $775,000 from the ARP funds to fund P-25, as proposed by Mr. Brown. While these funds in the future grants can be diverted from their original intended purpose to pay nurses at Gracel, the county nursing home, the amendment was proposed by Councilman Brown, does not specifically say where those funds should be placed. While his intent is clear to cut the funds to prevent them from being sent to Gracel for staffing, he does not provide directions on where these funds should be allocated. So I call that incomplete. In conclusion, for reasons, for that reason, I submit this memo and the accompanying information, which is on the back sheet, to council so that between now and their meeting on December 5, they can present amendments that comply with the Home Rule Charter and balance the Northampton County budget. This includes not only the general fund, but also the special revenue funds and the human service pass-through funds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address council? Hi. Please state your name and your city of residence.
My name is Jack C. Avolella. I am the Vice President of Lehigh University College Democrats, and I live in South Side, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania.
Could you spell your last name, please?
It's a mouthful. Now, ladies and gentlemen, as I'm sure many of you heard about an hour ago, the very, very public occurrences that happened in Banana Factory in South Side Bethlehem, the polling place for the school of which I attend and of which 2,000 students had voted in, went very poorly. A friend of mine had come in. I dropped him off at the parking lot of Banana Factory at 10 o'clock. They needed a ride. And I said, what time should... They asked me, what time should I be back? I said, 12, 12:30 tops. I expected two hours. They got back at 7:30 PM. So, in short, that's... As a student of Lehigh University, that is just simply unacceptable. To have a line of seven hours, to have figures like Jonathan Groff, Tony Award actor, having to be deployed to South Side Bethlehem, seeing President Helbley of Lehigh University on MSNBC giving an interview, our school's name and this county's name all over news sources of live election coverage because of the seven-hour line. Is that really publicity that's acceptable? In addition to that, there was not a problem that existed only in Lehigh, in our district, in Bethlehem's 3rd Ward. It happened again here, in Easton, at Kirby Sports Center, three-hour lines. And another, at Lafayette College, another similar instance of that. Otherwise, in South Side Bethlehem, in Bethlehem's 1st Ward North, there was an incident where people were being turned away at the polls. A professor of mine, Dr. Dean Cavano, had brought up to me that people were being registered as, you know, ready to vote. They went to the desk, they signed their name, they filled out the card, and then there was about 100 people in line. And many of these people, working people, they have to go to work. They said, "May I leave?" Pennsylvania state law prohibits this. The poll workers and the county allowed that. They left. When they went to return to say, "I'm here to cast my vote," they were turned away. In short, I ask this county committee, this council, to, upon reviewing of the methods of voting and how elections are conducted, I encourage you all to raise an eyebrow at how things were conducted, because an hour ago, the gentleman up here had mentioned that things went largely well. Unfortunately, there's a lot of articles on MSNBC and AP and Reuters that would disagree with that statement, and I for one stand here as a representative of Lehigh students to say, "I certainly don't." So, there are many solutions which I would encourage you all to consider. More machines, of course, is one of them. That is always a possible solution. In addition, one of the main difficulties was an early voting installation, which was here in Easton, was not readily accessible to many residents of Bethlehem, and such an installation would be helpful, because a key point is that Lehigh University students, as many of us are from out-of-state but are legally allowed to vote in Pennsylvania, we are unable to request mail-in ballot forms without a Pennsylvania PEN ID. For instance, when I registered, I'm originally from New Jersey, I was not able to get a mail-in ballot. So when the gentleman comes up in here and says mail-in ballots would be a better solution, the answer is, we are... It is extraordinarily difficult for us to get them. It's not a solution. Second, you had... Mr. Gafredo here brought up a solution of having paper ballots in addition to the machines and questioned the legality of it. Other counties in Pennsylvania do this. Lancaster County comes to mind in particular. They have a system where they have paper ballots in boxes in addition to the voting machines, which you may use at your preference. That could be a solution that could be entertained here, because in a district of... In a ward of about 4,000 students, of which 2,000 voted, there were only two machines. Granted, one of them had broken about 15 minutes into voting, but two machines is unacceptable. In Bethlehem's 1st Ward North, which I had mentioned before, people were being turned away from voting, in a district of... In a ward of about 1,000, there was only one machine. In... At Lafayette College at Kirby Sports Center, for 3,000 students, there were two machines. It is logistically impossible to process the amount of students who are going to vote through that many machines, no matter how you slice it. And I, for one, commenting as part of my organization of Lehigh College Dems, finds that to be utterly and totally unacceptable. So I encourage you all to look and to treat with hesitation the current voting patterns that we have here and the current voting systems that we have here, and I call upon you to look upon, perform in some of the ways which I have prescribed. I appreciate your time. Have a wonderful night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, courtesy of the floor?
Hi, good evening. Nicole Petersak, Director of Administration. I just wanted to come up and share the administration's perspective on Election Day. As the Director of Administration, I oversee the county's Elections Division, and I want to share with you some of the efforts that were undertaken across the county to support and reinforce our Election Day operations. As it was mentioned, we saw record-breaking voter participation at college campuses, not just in our county, but at campuses all across the Commonwealth. The turnout records were not just broken by Lehigh and Lafayette students. We saw staggering turnout before Election Day during the ballot-on-demand period. We had over 7,000 Northampton County voters coming to the election office to request, complete, and submit their mail-in ballot applications. There were lines filling the entire lower level of the hallway, two to three people deep, for nearly a week straight. On Election Day, more than 116,000 people voted at the polls, which resulted in lines at nearly every polling location at some point during the day. On Election Day, I was in the Elections Office with Amy Hess, the Deputy Registrar, to oversee and coordinate our Election Day operations and support. We operated an Election Day call center, which answered over 800 phone calls on Election Day from both voters and polling locations. Over the course of the day, we deployed nine additional voting machines. Two of those machines were to replace machines that did not turn on that morning. Seven of those machines were to support districts with unusually high turnout. Four machines in total, nearly half of the emergency machines that we deployed, went to Bethlehem's 3rd Ward, which is located at the Banana Factory. Of the nine machines that we deployed, six of them went to districts on the south side of Bethlehem, the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd wards, to keep pace with increased turnout, presumably from Lehigh University students. We also sent two additional machines to the Kirby Center, where a majority of Lafayette's students vote. There were very long lines at the Kirby Center, and in response to that, we sent two additional voting machines, for a total of four voting machines, one additional poll book, for a total of three, and three additional poll workers, which were deployed between 1:45 PM and 3:00 PM. By 3:45 PM, that location was reported to be busy but stabilized. At Bethlehem's 3rd Ward, we began sending support shortly after 8:00 AM, when one of their three machines would not turn on. Our ESNS tech traveled onsite and advised that we needed to swap the machine. By 11:20 AM, we delivered a replacement machine, and by 12:45 PM, we delivered a fourth machine. At 1:20 PM, we delivered an additional poll book and a poll worker to operate it. At 2:00 PM, another poll worker arrived onsite. During this period, the judge of election informed me that he was not using the fourth machine, claiming it was not needed. He was redirected and instructed to begin using the machine. At 3:30 PM, our ESNS tech went back to the Banana Factory to ensure that all the machines were operating. It was confirmed and reported that the machines were working without any issue. That tech remained onsite until the polling location closed that evening, out of an abundance of caution. At 4:30 PM, another poll worker arrived onsite, and at 5:30 PM, a fifth machine was delivered with another poll book. At 6:00 PM, another poll worker arrived, and at 6:25 PM, two additional poll workers arrived with additional supplies. By 6:45 PM, three more poll workers arrived, and at 7:35, a sixth machine was delivered to the location. At 7:45 PM, a poll worker arrived to deliver water and supplies, and by 9:30 PM, the last voter was processed and the polling location closed. By the time the polls had closed, Bethlehem's 3rd Ward had received one replacement machine and three additional voting machines, for a total of six; two additional poll books, for a total of four; and 10 additional workers, plus an onsite dedicated ESNS machine technician. Regarding the machines that were allocated to precincts across the county, Registrar Camini used a formula of one machine per 450 expected voters, which was based on turnout in the 2020 and 2022 general elections. Turnout at Banana Factory was 37% more than in 2016... Sorry. Turnout at Banana Factory was 37% more than in 2016 and 87% higher than in 2020. This could not have been predicted by the registrar. I'm not certain how many machines it would have taken at Banana Factory. With three machines, they would have had just over 560 voters per machine, and with four, they were at just over 400.
One minute.
There were many precincts across the county, such as Tatumie, which had one machine, 600 voters, and smooth operations. The deciding factor may not have been the number of machines, but the person running the location. The judge for Bethlehem's 3rd Ward is elected to his position. He attended the mandatory training for both the primary and the general election this year, but throughout the day, the judge was observed to lack a sense of urgency or ability to efficiently manage the polling location with increased turnout. Despite the reinforcements of machines, supplies, and workers sent to the poll site, it took hours, nearly to the end of the day, for the location to stabilize. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, courtesy of the floor? Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
At... Good evening, council. Before I start, it's nice to see you. Good to be with you tonight. You have a lot of work to do, so I'll be brief. At the behest of Councilmember Kupora, I have begun the process of looking at what we might be able to do with a potential bond issuance that is something short of what we originally proposed to you. And it is my suggestion, and I'm working with our team, to bring a bond package to you that may be more palatable to county council. If you recall, that vote was five to four. I think if we bring the package back, as suggested by Commissioner Kupora, which includes the demolition and replacement of the parking garage with the ability to add a building in the future, as well as including supercharging our ability to move the P-25 project forward by putting the full amount of the money in the next issuance, we may be able to get that done early in the next year. I don't have anything else? Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have old business. Public hearing of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Leasing Northampton County-Owned Real Property to Robert Oswald Nazareth, Pennsylvania." Ms. Keegan and Mr. Kraft introduced this ordinance at the November 21, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding this ordinance? Call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the public hearing of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Leasing Northampton County-Owned Real Property to Mark Deisher Bath, Pennsylvania." Ms. Keegan and Mr. Warren introduced this ordinance at the November 21, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this matter? Hearing none. Is there any discussion from council? Call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr.... I'm sorry, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
And Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of the 2025 Northampton County Budget and Capital Improvement Plans. First, we have consideration of budgetary position-related issues. First, General Government Controller Upgrade Audit Manager. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time audit manager, pay grade CS-GR-35-4D, salary $106,833, and the Department of the Controller shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR-35-5E, salary $111,640, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. Next, Upgrade Auditor One. Upgrade Auditor One to Auditor Two. Upgrade Two Auditor Two to Lead Auditor. Mr. Giovanni.
Yes. Is it hereby resolved... It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time auditor one, pay grade CS-GR-22-2B, salary $53,777, and the Department of the Controller shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR-22-3C, salary $56,197, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time auditor one, pay grade CS-GR-22-1A, salary $51,461, and the Department of the Controller shall be upgraded to one full-time position of auditor two, pay grade CS-GR-25-1A, salary $59,079, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of two full-time auditor two, pay grade CS-GR-25-1A, salary $118,158, and the Department of the Controller shall be upgraded to two full-time positions of lead auditor, pay grade CS-GR-28-1A, salary $135,656, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo? Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, upgrade Senior Lead Auditor. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time Senior Lead Auditor, pay grade CS-GR-32-2B, salary $85,211, and the Department of the Controller shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR-32-3C, salary $89,045, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have General Government Administration Conservation District Eliminate Agricultural Conservation Specialist, Clerical Specialist, County Conservation Manager, Four County Conservation Specialist Engineer Program Coordinator, and County Watershed Specialist. Mr. Giovanni, please introduce.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of agricultural conservation specialist, pay grade CS-GR-22-1A, salary $51,461, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical specialist, pay grade RU-GR-17-1A, salary $37,612, shall be eliminated to the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of county conservation manager, pay grade CS-GR-27-2B, salary $67,692, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that two full-time positions of county conservation specialists, pay grade CS-GR-25-1A, salary $118,158, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration. in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of county conservation specialist, pay grade CS-GR25-2B, salary $61,738, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of county conservation specialist, pay grade CS-GR25-5E, salary $70,453, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of engineer, pay grade CS-GR33-1A, salary $85,384, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of program coordinator, pay grade CS-GR26-2B, salary $64,648, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of county watershed specialist, pay grade CS-GR25-1A, salary $59,079, shall, uh, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration Conservation District, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Court System and Corrections District Attorney. Upgrade Administrative Assistant Executive Secretary Office Supervisor. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of administrative assistant, pay grade CS-GR17-7G, salary $53,233, in the office of the district attorney, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR17-8H, salary $55,656, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of executive secretary, pay grade CS-GR19-8H, salary $61,023, in the office of district attorney, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR19-9I, salary $63,768, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of office supervisor, pay grade CS-GR19-8H, salary $61,023, in the office of the district attorney, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR19-9I, salary $63,768, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Court System and Corrections Court Services Administration Transfer Clerical Tech III to Orphans Court. Mr. Giovanni, introduce.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician III, pay grade CR-GR15-1A, salary $33,384, in the Department of Court Services Administration, shall be transferred to the Department of Orphans Court, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Court System and Corrections Court Services Criminal Upgrade Lead Deputy Court Clerk, Deputy Court Clerk. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of lead deputy court clerk, pay grade GR- I'm sorry, CR-GR20-7G, salary $54,733, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR20-7G, salary $61,121, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of deputy court clerk, pay grade CR-GR18-4D, salary $43,741, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR-GR20-3C, salary $45,896, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Upgrade 10 Clerical Technician III. Mr. Giovanni, please introduce.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that seven full-time positions of clerical technician III, pay grade CR-GR15-1A, salary $233,688, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR-GR17-1A, salary $256,235, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician III, pay grade CR-GR15-2B, salary $34,877, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR-GR17-1A, salary $36,605, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position clerical technician III, pay grade CR-GR15-5E, salary $39,812, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR-GR17-4D, salary $41,772, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician III, pay grade CR-GR15-8H, salary $45,432, in the Department of Court Services Criminal, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR-GR17-7G, salary $47,670, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote, please. Excuse me. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Court System and Corrections. Corrections Eliminate Two Corrections Supervisor Lieutenant and Create Two Corrections Supervisor Sergeant. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that two full-time positions of corrections supervisor lieutenant, pay grade CS-GR25-1A, salary $118,158, shall be eliminated in the Department of Corrections, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that two full-time positions of correctional corrections supervisor sergeant, pay grade CS-GR24-1A, salary $112,840, shall be created in the Department of Corrections, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Public Works Operations and Maintenance Upgrade Operations and Maintenance Supervisor. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time operations and maintenance supervisor, pay grade CS-GR28-3C, salary $74,070, in the Department of Public Works Operations and Maintenance, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS-GR28-4D, salary $77,403, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Human Service Program Centralized Data Upgrade Accountant I, Accountant II. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant I, pay grade HS-GR35A-1A, salary $46,634, in the Department of Human Services Pro- uh, Human Service Program Centralized Data, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC1-1A, salary $51,461, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant II, pay grade HS-GR38A-1A, salary $53,217, in the Department of Human Services Program Centralized Data, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC2-1A, salary $59,079, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Human Services Children Youth and Families Upgrade Accountant II, Accountant III. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant II, pay grade HS-GR38A-1A, salary $53,217, in the Department of Human Services Children Youth and Families, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC2-1A, salary $59,079, effective January 1, 2025. It is further resolved by the, with, by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant III, pay grade HS-GR41-2B, salary $63,462, in the Department of Human Services Children Youth and Families, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC3-1A, salary $67,828, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Upgrade Program Specialist I to Program Specialist II. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time program specialist I, pay grade HS-GR39-4D, salary $63,462, in the Department of Human Services Children Youth and Families, shall be upgraded to one full-time program specialist II, pay grade HS-GR41-4D, salary $69,302, effective January 1, 2025.
Discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Human Services Area Agency on Aging Upgrade Accountant II. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant II, pay grade HS-GR38A-2B, salary $55,612, in the Department of Human Services Area Agent- Agency of the Aging, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC2-1A, salary $59,079, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Human Services Health Choices Upgrade Accountant II.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant II, pay grade HS-GR38A-8H, salary $72,421, in the Department of Human Services Health Choices, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC2-7G, salary $76,937, effective January 1, 2025.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have Human Services Mental Health Upgrade Accountant I, HSB200000005, accountant I, HBS- HSB20000003, accountant II. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant III, HSB20000005, pay grade HS-GR35A-1A, salary $46,634, in the Department of Human Services Mental Health, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS-GRAC1-1A, salary $51,461, effective January 1, 2025. It is hereby, it is further resolved by the, by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant I, HSB20000003, pay grade HS-GR35A-1A, salary perigade, pay grade H S dash G R thirty-five A dash one A salary forty-six thousand six thirty-four in the Department of Human Services Mental Health shall be upgraded to pay grade H S dash G R A C one dash one A salary fifty-one thousand four sixty-one effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant, two, pay grade H S G R three eight A dash five E salary sixty-three thousand four sixty-two in the Department of Human Services Mental Health shall be upgraded to pay grade H S dash G R A C two dash four D salary sixty-seven thousand four nineteen effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have Upgrade Accountant Three, Mental Health Early Intervention Developmental Programs. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant, three, pay grade H S dash G R four one dash two B salary sixty-three thousand four sixty-two in the Department of Human Services Mental Health Early Intervention and Developmental Program shall be upgraded to pay grade H S dash G R A C three dash one A salary sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the creation of one clerical, one, wait, create one clerical specialist. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby re- resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time clerical specialist, pay grade P S dash G R thirty dash one A salary thirty-seven thousand six seventeen shall be created in the Department of Human Services Mental Health effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have Human Services Drug and Alcohol Upgrade Accountant Two. Mr. Giovanni?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time accountant, two, pay grade H S dash G R three eight A dash four D salary sixty thousand seven twenty-nine in the Department of Human Services Drug and Alcohol shall be upgraded to pay grade H S dash G R A C two dash three C salary sixty-four thousand five sixteen effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration-
For the job, Tommy.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration of the two thousand and twenty-five pay scales resolution. Mr. Corpora, will you please introduce?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the two thousand and twenty-five salaries of the career service and exempt employees not within collective bargaining units whose job classifications are within the parameters of Northampton County Career Service and Exempt Pay Scales, respectively, as well as the part-time professional employees shall be indicated on the attached pay scales.
Is there any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five budget. First, we have consideration of amendments to the proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget resolution. Mr. Brown, will you introduce?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the proposed two thousand and twenty-five Northampton County budget shall be amended as indicated on the attached document.
Okay. So I understand that we have to go through each one and vote again, and then we'll vote on the total. So first, we have Fund Banger one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a proposal that, um, that, uh, if Mr. Giovanni would like to withdraw this budget amendment and take the eight thousand dollars out of our contingency fund to pay for this so we're not taking money from the hotel tax grants and things that aren't here yet to, uh, achieve what he wants to do. And I think it's the proper place to take the money from, not from grants that are designated because they went, they went for a grant. They were, they were denied. I think this is something his constituents wanted, and I fully support it to have it taken from our contingency fund to pay it instead of doing this budget amendment.
Any other discussion?
Do we, we have the funds in the contingency fund to do it that way? We have two hundred thousand dollars in our contingency fund.
Well, he called it a proposal. He didn't call it a motion, so.
Why did make the motion? I wanted to get Mr. Giovanni's input if he had any.
So I believe we do.
We have two hundred thousand dollars in our contingency fund. It's a cleaner way. We've done this for years. I mean, it's a cleaner way to do it. So if if everybody would be fine, I'd like to make a motion to do that, to withdraw this amendment and pay this eight thousand dollars to Banger one hundred and fifty anniversary fund. Eight thousand dollars from the Northampton County Contingency Fund.
I got a question.
All right, go ahead. Just checking on procedure.
Okay.
So the motion needs a second.
Well, I got a question for-
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, 'cause I don't even know if you made a motion yet. Um, so when we do the grant, usually there's a match request. I'm assuming now this would just be money that we'd be able to give, and there'd be no match?
Correct. Yeah, they requested eight thousand. We can give them eight thousand for our contingency fund. It's a lot cleaner than going to funds that aren't even here yet.
The only, uh, the only reason why I see it a little messier is we have a limited fund. These are grant requests coming from, you know, we are, we aren't stepping out of the lines as far as what they're requesting, where that money is coming from.
Well, their grant request was denied.
We're sidestepping the, we're sidestepping the process.
Their grant request was denied, and then I believe-
Sure, but we are also an elected body where we can use our judgment as well.
Right. I believe they came to Mr. Giovanni and asked for the funds, and I think this is the cleaner way to give them the funds than to take it from, uh, hotel tax and iron pigs and we have, you know, all the things we're taking it from. Just leave it in the budget the way it is and take it from our two hundred thousand dollar contingency fund. It's just gonna disappear at the end of the year, go back to the general fund.
I'll second Mr. Kraft's uh, motion.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corpora?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Motion fails by a vote of four to five.
Okay, so back to the original proposal.
Call for the vote on the-
Call for the vote. Just checking. Call for the vote.
So for clarification, now we're voting on the original remove money from hotel tax grants, iron pigs, Lehigh Valley, public telecommunications and bank for, and for Bangerboro.
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to three.
Thank you. Next, we have Fund Bath Firehouse Generator Purchase submitted by Mr. Giovanni. Twenty-five thousand dollars taken from future grants to Norco EMS Public Safety Grants. Any discussion?
Again, I'm gonna say the same thing. We should take it from the council contingency fund and not from future grants that aren't even there yet. But since it will die with lack of votes, I won't make the motion.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to three.
Next, we have, um, Funding the P two five radio system with county-wide cut to operating costs submitted by John Gafredo. Original amount described in proposed amendment referred to subtotal on page nineteen of a hundred and twenty-six million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Total of operating is... Oh, wait, I don't need to say all that. I just transfer in, transfer out, correct?
I'd like to at least comment, maybe make an amendment. Firstly, according to Steve's memo, the two and a half percent is now being taken from the total without the transfer out. I would like to just make it the original flat amount. You don't have to do two and a half percent across the board. Pull three point three million or whatever the original fund was, the original amount was, across operating. And then I disagree with the ending balance of eighty-nine million. If we're removing three million from a hundred and sixteen million, it'd be a hundred and thirteen million and change. I understand where these figures are coming from.
So what it says here, I need the expenditures to match. So you're suggesting, what is your change?
So it was two point five percent-
Correct, which he states would be two thou- two million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred dollars. You're proposing to change that to an even three point three million?
Give me one second. I'll tell you exactly the number. Three million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Say it again, three million?
One hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And you're proposing, proposing that comes from?
From operating. As the financial, uh, deputy financial advisor, whatever Steve's title is, at his discretion. It doesn't need to be a flat across the board. He can use his discretion. I think that's well within his job's purview. But that's where it'll be coming from, not from personnel, not from salaries and wages. And we discussed this before. Not gonna be coming from anybody's wages. This is coming from an operating budget that is year in and year out overshoots 'cause it's based on full staff, full staff using full operations, which we aren't fully staffed. So we are over budgeted. We always are over budgeted. And I'm gonna reduce it now, put it aside for the P twenty-five radio system that was deemed to be.
Without specific directions, I will not substitute my judgment for county councils. Our budget, as proposed by the county executive, stands as proposed. And those cuts just won't happen without specific direction because the budget will be unbalanced.
And if the budget is unbalanced, isn't that illegal?
I, I, I'm not making, I'm not making a, um, I'm not gonna make a declaration of whether it would be legal or illegal. That is for a court to decide. My statement is the budget would be unbalanced. And I don't believe, since the Home Rule Charter says, um, the council must pass a balanced budget, the budget would not be imbalanced, and they're not in conformance with the Home Rule Charter. How that would be resolved would be up to, um, actions taken, um, outside of my, my control. But I, 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 the ba- budget would not be balanced because there's no corresponding cuts.
And can we get sued for this?
I, I, I don't know the posture the administration is going to take. My position is, and the position of the county executive, our budget stands as proposed. And without, even with the changes Mr. Gafredo has made, he hasn't given me specific directions or the administration's specific directions. And without that, th- these moves will not be made. Thank you.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Has, really quick, Mr. Brown, I know you've been around a lot longer than I have, and I know you probably know-
Over a decade.
Probably know the history of this county-
Mm-hmm.
A little bit more than I do. Two, has this ever happened before?
No.
Has this ever happened with any administration, any other council?
If I could, if I could say, um, uh, Mr. Cusick, who sat on this body probably about as long as I've been serving as controller and then director of administration, you know, and, and all other council members, Mr. Angle, Mr. Heckman, when he was here the first time. This format has been around for a long time. Mr. Giovanni has actually used it, and it is actually a picture-perfect amendment. He's picked the expense, the line item, and, and pulled it out. Never before has a council member or a council directed the administration just to cut and use discretion. There are usually specific cuts for a specific purpose, and it still throws special revenue funds and all that stuff out of whack because some of general fund funding, some money, some money comes in from the general fund, and some money comes in from, uh, um, the special revenue funds. So, um, I'm not in a position to, I, I don't even really know how to rectify what is being proposed. So, you know, I'd have to analyze it a little bit more. But I can tell you tonight, the budget won't be balanced if you vote on it with this amendment.
And how won't this, how, Mr. Gafredo-
Can I comment?
No, let him finish.
He's asking me how-
You said this is not going to affect salaries. Is-
Will not.
It's not going to affect salaries?
Salaries are, salaries are expenses, and with a two and a half percent cut, Mr. Gafredo can say, don't take it from salaries.
I'm not cutting expenses across the board.
He stated very clearly it was from the operating-
There's a pie chart. You guys have it right here. Personnel's a part of the pie chart. Operations is a part of the pie chart. There's debt services, and there's all types of other things. Personnel is specifically separate from operations.
So some operations actually affects personnel.
Wait, Mr. Warren, did you finish your question?
Some personnel, some, some operations affect personnel because we use operations to draw down funds that pay personnel.
Steve, Steve, I, Mr. Warren, I would like to answer your question.
Answer the question.
So first of all, if you cut expenses from a budget, you aren't putting the budget out of balance in the sense that we'd be spending more than we'd be bringing in. We'd be doing the opposite. We'd be spending less. Now, we have been draining our general fund. We're draining our fa- financial stabilization fund. It is my opinion that we're spending a lot of money, maybe more than we're bringing in. I would like to propose a modest, you know, it's a five hundred million dollar budget. I'm looking to cut three million dollars from what we spend. If we go back in history, we can see, you know, the two thousand and four budget. We projected to spend, or we budgeted five hundred and forty-seven thou- for, five hundred and forty-seven million. We did four hundred and twenty-seven, way less than what we budgeted for. A hundred and twenty million less than what we budgeted for. What I'm simply stating is, we're going to project to spend less by three million dollars in one portion of our expense side, which would be the operation side. The total of that budget is a hundred and twenty-eight million. If I go back to what we spent last year in the operation side, we projected, or we budgeted a hundred and thirty million, we only spent a hundred and three million. This year, we're projecting to spend a hundred and sixteen million, and I'm only bringing it down, this is the operation side, by three million, which would bring to a hundred and thirteen million, which is still ten million more than what we're projecting to spend as of last year. So to say that we are not going to be able to pay our bills, that we're going to put this budget out of balance in a catastrophic way, I completely disagree with. Not to mention, the three million dollars is being set aside for radios. If there were ever a crisis where all of a sudden the county came to us and said, hey, we need money, where can we get it from? There's three million dollars. We have a financial stabilization fund that we can pull from. We aren't creating any crises. We're trying to limit and expose less on our expenditure side by spending slightly less in one division of the entire expenditure side, which I would say is, you know, decent government. If we can't, as the county council who controls the purse, reduce spending, which will be your obligation if this passes, then we aren't the power of the purse. Which, that is our role. It is our prerogative as elected officials.
Has been noted from the administration, and I think you just mentioned it during your, your comments here, that we're overtaxing our citizens, correct?
Did I just say that now?
I thought, based on some of the figures you gave with regard to the one hundred and thirty million from last year and then one hundred and three million.
No, I, so I'm not forming an opinion on if I believe we're overtaxing our citizens or not. That's not my, my prerogative by this. What I think we're doing is, I think we're, we're spending money, we're draining our savings to pay our bills, it looks like, so we could buy more things that we want. You know, I could go through this blue book of what the operation increases are. You could go through, say, I want to buy new conference room furniture for prothonitory, you know, the Controller has a 20% increase in personnel expenditure because we just went through the expenditures for personnel for next year. She has, you know, raises and added positions, but they have a 28% increase in operating. So that's almost eight percent more in relationship to what they're gaining in just personnel salaries. So I do think there's fluff there. The history represents that there's fluff there. And all I'm saying is, let's take some of that fluff, put it to something that they stated was such an emergency to have, which I believe was a political lie to get their bond passed through, which annoyed me at the time because we were called, you know, a dangerous council for putting lives at risk, which I am still very upset that that lie has gone basically unnoticed. And I also am not happy about the fact that I was told that this would be cutting from personnel salaries, which it would not be. That is another lie. So what would I would like to do is cut our operating expenses. You know, we buy staples, we buy paper, we buy tables, we buy chairs, we buy a lot of things. It's a big county, it's a lot of things to buy. Just want to buy a little less.
From a pure procedural standpoint of what this inevitably, I understand where you're coming from. I understand where you're coming from and your particular philosophy and direction you want to go. We're not going to have a balanced budget.
Absolutely, we will. Absolutely, we will. And I would, I will argue, and Kelly, I understand, he's telling you one thing, I'm telling you another.
Who are you, though, that you think that you can balance the budget over the person that we pay a huge salary, well, not a huge salary, but a large salary? That is his job, and, and he is the expert here, but you think you know differently.
Kelly.
You know differently on actually every single thing we try and do.
Our job is exactly this, to decide amongst the nine of us what we spend, how we spend it. That is our job. Steve works for us.
I, I, you know what?
That you need to understand. You need to understand that.
I get it. I really do.
I'm concerned that we are going to be out of balance. That is my concern.
That's our job, is to pass a balanced budget.
Are we going to be out of balance? You're our attorney. I'm, I'm, are we going to be out of balance?
Let me read what it says about the balanced budget, if I can. Balanced budget, now we heard Mr. Barron use that phrase. 703B says, balanced budget, the total of proposed expenditures shall not exceed the total of anticipated funds available. It's not out of balance, as I understand it. You have expenditures and you have revenue, and the revenue is at least equal to or greater than the expenditures. You're not out of balance.
What I heard Mr. Barron say is that he will not make the decision. I did not hear him, I mean, he's, I, I heard what he said, but the way that I heard it is, it's not, it will be unbalanced because he will not decide where the money comes from. He's requesting that we do that. But there's nothing in the Charter that says that. He's proposing a cut. And whether the history of people, I, I'm sure there have been cuts made and suggested in the past before, whether they've gotten through or not, I don't know. But I guess my question is, if we pass this, why will you refuse to do what council suggests?
Well, first of all, I work for the county executive. He appoints me, he keeps me in my position, he can fire me tomorrow if I don't follow his directives. That's the first thing. The second thing, Ms. Vargo Hefner, is you talk about the budget being balanced. One of the things that, you know, expenditures and expenditures and the like are one thing. Putting the money towards the P-25, which is the intent of this, correct, Mr. Gafredo, taking all the other stuff out of it. I cannot take mental health money. I cannot take children and youth money. I cannot take area agency on aging veterans money. I cannot take brownfield money. The list goes on and on of the money I can't take. So therefore, if I take money from the departments, I make those decisions because some of that money rolls from year to year, which is causing the figure that Mr. Gafredo is seeing. Those are some of the decisions that council has not given me. They've not given me directives. Do I take from court administration? Do I take from the district attorney? Do I take from the Juvenile Justice Center? Some of that is Title IV E money that needs to be spent for a specific purpose. I could go on. I'm an expert in fraud. I have my Juris Doctorate from Widener University, and I have taken several accounting classes. This is something I have not seen before. There's money that has to go in and out. And while, yes, there is a simple balancing number that is there, you're taking the general balance number, there are restrictions on money that you take in. Council sees all those. When you pass a resolution or you pass a budget amendment, every one of those revenue dollars you take in, along with the expenses, has strings attached to them. Kat Miss Hilgard is sitting in the room. When you give Arts Quest money, you tell her exactly how to spend it, and then we memorialize that, you trust the administration to memorialize that in a grant agreement. I am bound by several of those agreements. And the number that Mr. Gafredo is taking is a very elementary number that doesn't take into account all of those examples that I have given you. Money rolls from year to year. Yes, we do have a vacancy factor. We don't, we don't always have as high a vacancy factor. Sometimes we actually do put money, additional money in for healthcare because at times, we do at the end of the year, when the healthcare bill finally comes due, have to move money between the orgs to make sure we have a balanced budget at the end of the year. I'm telling you that if this passes, the budget will be out of balance, and I can show in a very, very detailed level how it will be out of balance and sufficiently enough to show that it does not meet the standards of the Home Rule Charter. That I am one hundred and ten percent confident in.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Out of the, I think it's one thousand nine hundred and some employees, how many employees does the county currently employ?
One thousand nine hundred.
So we're fully staffed in all departments?
Not fully staffed, no. In the 24-hour operations, we do have a vacancy factor built in. However, we do not have a vacancy factor built in to other departments, most other departments. We just recently put one in.
Out of the vacancies, fully staffed, how many spots are there in the county?
I haven't seen the number recently. That changes from day to day, an hour to hour.
Ballpark.
I would say right now, our vacancy factor... Are you talking just 24/7 operations or overall?
And it doesn't need to be an exact number, it could be off by, you know, one or two. But we have so many employees, and if we were fully staffed across the board, like I know the jail has many vacancies, I know Greystale has many vacancies. If we're fully staffed, you know, give me a denominator and a numerator.
If we were, if we were fully staffed, and we, because we do put a vacancy factor, and if we were absolutely fully staffed, we'd be at around seventeen hundred people, probably, maybe eighteen hundred people. And I'd actually have to figure out money from other line items to balance the budget because we put a vacancy factor into the budget. And I can almost guarantee you, I would not have enough money in certain spots to either pay people or pay the bills related to those departments. The vacancy factor is actually done over years and years of knowledge of how people are hired at the jail. We look at the overtime factor. It's not just a simple number.
I think my point is, and what you're dancing around is, we put into the budget for positions that aren't filled as if they were filled.
We, we actually fund every position outside, I'm not dancing around it, I've said it very clearly, I talked about it in the beginning of the year. I've said it at several budget hearings, when I point to pages sixteen and seventeen in the front of the book. We actually fund all those positions. We intend to hire people for those positions. The only vacancy factors we put in, it's a little higher this year at Greystale, and it is about a 20% vacancy factor at the jail, 911, and JJC. And JJC is actually a new one this year because we couldn't fund it at a hundred percent. So cutting the JJ, so cutting anything out of the JJC's budget is going to be much larger than a two and a half percent cut.
Well, that's why I said it would be open to be at your discretion. Another question, the general fund, it was twenty-nine million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars in twenty, twenty-four. We're reducing it by twenty million dollars to only have nine million dollars, nine point seven million in our general fund. That twenty million dollar reduction is concerning to me.
Okay.
Not to mention, the financial stabilization fund is going from, you know...
And, and Mr. Gafredo, it should be concerning to you because if you're going to cut another two and a half percent out of the budget, then you're really dragging things down to the bottom dollar.
So the way I see it is, revenue is our money coming in.
Uh huh, and that's increased.
That's great, but if we're still, we're still burning through our savings, means we're spending a lot.
And Mr. Gafredo, you voted for every one of those upgrades, and you want to cut two and a half percent.
We only have certain information here. We come here, we have full-time jobs, we come here part-time. You guys are our eyes and ears, our information source. We have very little, you know, if we come in here and say, oh, we're not going to vote for this, we get all these reasons why it's a bad decision. So usually, yes, we try to help the county by passing things that are presented to us. But when we get the budget, for not a very long period of time, we have this budget in our hands, we get to see from a thousand feet up what's going on financially. Financially, if I'm looking at this, I'm a little concerned. I see us burning through cash, I see us not showing any signs of slowing down with spending. So yes, this two and a half percent, it is barely a drop in the bucket. I am, I am not fixing anything. All I'm doing is, we need to find ways, and if this is a way that could help, one department, one area, I don't think that's a bad thing to do, try to reduce spending.
Look, our administration has reduced spending every year that we've got here. We have done it responsibly. We have looked at programs that have stopped and started. Our track record on that is very clear. It was so, we have been so responsible, we were able to cut taxes eight percent, okay, which is unprecedented.
Because we have a lot of warehouses bringing in a lot of revenue, that's a big revenue boom.
A, a, as a matter of fact, warehouse increase in revenue over that time, so we've had a 16% tax cut. The revenue from warehouses has only increased 12.3%. So there is an additional five million dollars there of tax revenue that has been captured in other ways, mostly through cuts. Now, there is money, some of the...
I think that's another important area that we need to focus on. But as far as how we spend our operating side of the budget, I think there is money in there that can be saved. And I do agree that there are probably funds that cannot be touched. Okay, don't touch those. But there's a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars in that budget. There's three million that can be touched.
Is there any other?
Honorable President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just for a minute, my name was mentioned as the history of the budgets. While I agree in some of the areas of Mr. Gafredo, I agree, yes, but no offense, Mr. Brown, that tax increase that came in his administration and the development of all types combined with certain various, certain specific cuts over the years have allowed us to have a tax cut and a balance, and a balanced budget, not balanced budget, but no tax increases for years. The group fact that money came out, there was reasons given, but money came out of the emergency fund to help balance the budget. So no matter how great the executive is, and how great the fiscal office is, with all due respect, Mr. Barron, you're only going to go so long, as they, one councilman used to say, of using the feed corn to feed yourself. We, we're going to get close at some point down the road to definitely needing more revenue coming in because we are churning out, despite cuts, you are churning out budgets using a lot of the revenues that have been there and that have come out. And so I, I think one of the big problems you face, Mr. Gafredo, is every administration could have tackled this differently, just as every council does. I've seen this before. It just depends on the relationship. I'm not telling any secrets to say that this has been a somewhat contentious relationship between council and administration for, for some time now on different subjects. It's either, you're either vote for everything the administration wants and, or you're, you're instructions. I, I don't agree with that, but yeah, that's the message that's put out there. I do agree with you that I think unfairly some issues are brought up and used as a catalyst to get something passed. For example, P-25, we've, we've been unpatched, as you're well aware publicly, for not caring about people's lives. Nobody talks about the huge amount of sixty-five million that's added to that as a bond issue when only less than 10% is going to be used for the radios. So I admire what you're trying to do. The, the bottom line is, though, as you've seen tonight, you're, you're not going to get anywhere, I hate to say this, but you're not going to get anywhere if there isn't a cooperative attitude between administration and council. Administration has made it clear that they're not, they're going to, they've used the terms, we'll take it from pay or we'll take it from, they're not going to let us pay the nurses, agency nurses at Greystale. And, and everything is, is, if you do A, the world will act. If you do B, we're going to, we're going to starve people and then the world will act, and so on and so forth. It's unfortunate we're starting to follow the trends of Washington and Harrisburg. That's, that's the new trend in local politics. I'm, I'm concerned again because I do not think, Mr. Barron's right, he will not do, he will not look in any area other than the areas he's mentioned. And I, I agree with Mr. Spidone. The outline, we could go into legal arguments and have it be up to a judge, whether it's, we do something and it's out of budget, budget. Mr. Barron has a right to give his opinion and his resume. I think some of us have resumes, but we took the county courses and that's agreed. And we, we could disagree, and, and a court could disagree with all the solicitors in the room. But my concern is that, the reason I can't support this is not because I disagree with your intent, but that without a cooperative approach, I think this is going to be a real problem. I think you're, you're, you're going to have unintended consequences. Having been an administrator with, with such revenues, they can create some havoc, like depending on where they want to take the money from. And while I, I think that's flexible, administration of finances could probably cover this, I don't think you're going to get that. So my recommendation is, I can't vote for this, but that's why I've asked for written quarterly reports. I think it's imperative that we study those very carefully going through the year. You sit down, you look at the figures, you take notes, and you come up with, with specific areas because you're, you're asking them to do something, which on the whole, I understand. But I also understand they're not going to do that. They've made that perfectly clear. Whether they should or shouldn't, we can have a debate on that as it comes. But yeah, I would, I would say that I can't support it because of many of the reasons given. But I, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to say anymore at this time because it's difficult, because I can't follow the media online or anything because the magnetic north is interfering with my, my strength between my home and the county council office. Actually, I'd like to divert some money and actually get into the 20th century of communication and part with townships.
I believe we did that, Mr. Heckman, but once again, another ordinance of ours was not followed.
Well, that's it. I can't control. I mean, here's the bottom line. I, I can't support your ordinance. I, I respect your trying to do something, but I, I do think that it would create a problem, and... problem, and, uh, maybe at another time, another place, with other people, uh, all of that will happen, but I don't think it's gonna happen this year. So that's all that happens this year on the matter.
Any other discussion? Mr. Brown?
Uh, I appreciate Mr. Gafredo's attempt to reduce costs, absolutely. Uh, unfortunately, I think Ron is correct when he says that, uh, because the, um, the administration and Steve just said, he will not do the will of council, even though I believe that is their charge to, uh, if this is the body that is supposed to control the purse string, if this body makes a decision, it is the job of the fiscal department to implement it. And when I was executive, we worked closely with council. We, we get numerous amendments, and it was the budget director that would help guide how those budget amendments would and would not work. They would give us feedback on what would and would not work. Um, to get a blatant stonewall out of, uh, Mr. Barron at this point, which I do understand his job has been threatened if he doesn't carry the water for the administration. Understandable, he is at will, uh, and he publicly acknowledged that. Uh, unfortunately, I, I, I agree with Mr. Gafredo in terms of, if you look at the, uh, the leashing of cash in our budget, we're spending, uh, pretty much everything that's possible, and I object to the, uh, reach into the special, the, um, stabilization fund, which was originally set up, uh, to protect the emergency aspects of the county, not to balance the general, not to balance the budget. We never intended for that. Uh, the tax increase came under my administration, but it was actually promoted by council. Council led the tax increase in that year when I was county executive, which the current executive was a member of when that tax increase was voted through. Uh, and the fact that, uh, Mr. Barron is able to point out the three million dollars that the current administration has used year over year for open space to stop warehouse proliferation, um, it's, it's kind of interesting because over the same time period that the current administration has been in office, we've seen over eighteen million square feet of warehouse actually promulgate, uh, the area. And I'm not aware of any single particular warehouse that was actually stopped by the, if you go by the seven years and off the twenty-one million dollars, it's a million dollars we're spending to, per million, uh, square feet of warehouse that's being built, not very effective use of the money overall. So I, I support the amendment as Mr. Gafredo's putting forth. It is unfortunate if it becomes a stonewall, the administration, uh, the director of budgets is supposed to work with the, uh, council, whether it be on this matter or other ones that, whether, whichever side you stand on ethically and from a operational perspective, I think it's, it's an erroneous position for, uh, the budget administrator to take and the director of fiscal to, uh, basically tell the, uh, council to go stick it, uh, if you would, um, overall. And I just think, unfortunately, Mr. Heckman is probably correct, but I would push this amendment forward anyway.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have, I'm, I'm not gonna support your amendment either, John, but, um, I just wanted to correct one little thing. Um, when you were county executive and the five Republicans voted for the tax increase, Lamont and I voted no. We never voted for a tax increase, and you could have easily vetoed that budget and not had a tax increase, but you chose not to.
Yet you were a member of the council that initiated and pushed that, uh, tax increase forward.
Never voted, I voted no.
Whether you voted for it or not, you were a member of-
Read the record.
Like this body here-
Stayed, stayed at the way it is, you could have vetoed that budget and you did not.
The whole council is accountable for the decisions of the, of this body. So, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Craft.
Yeah, it needs to be clarified. Call for the vote, I guess.
Okay, call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Craft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
The amendment fails by a vote of four to five.
Next, we have fund tool upgrade for Columbia Fire Company, presented by Tom Giovanni. Ten thousand dollars taken from future grants and put into a Norco EMS public safety grant for Columbia Fire Company. Any discussion on the matter?
Well, here we go with deja vu again. I'd rather see us take it from the County Contingency Fund than take it from future grants that aren't even there yet. Uh, that's my recommendation. Um, I will not be supporting this for that reason. If it was from our contingency fund, I'd support it one-hundred percent.
Any other discussion? Mr. Warren?
I, Mr. Giovanni, I think, I think it's a very good idea, what Mr. Craft has proposed. Is there, it, I'm genuinely wondering, is there a rationale as to why you wanna do it the way that you had initially proposed it via the, the amendment and not coming from the contingency fund? Because I, I, I support all of these organizations in terms of getting them what they need for the community, absolutely, but if we're able to do it without taking future grants and future grant funding, then I would rather do it from a contingency perspective. I'm, I'm just, I'm genuinely wondering why. I think it would be more fiscally prudent of us to go the route that Mr. Craft has proposed, frankly.
Well, um-
President?
Yes, Mr. Heckman?
Um, yeah, I mean, it could come from either one, but I don't think what Mr. Giovanni's doing is all that bad. I mean, over the years, I've seen, I, I've been giving this money, for example, looking at something like, uh, what he's proposing as opposed to, uh, altering a millionaire ballpark owner's charity fund, um, you know, and I, the idea that we have this process that is somehow gold, uh, I, I remember I was there when the process started, and I know the reasons for the process. And, uh, I, I don't think what Mr. Giovanni's doing is destroying or upsetting anything. And I would say about the, uh, contingency fund, the money doesn't go away, it rolls into the general fund, uh, and, and whatever we put in the budget for contingency unless that's changed in the budgeting process, it appears. So, uh, you know, I mean, there's different ways to look at this, and yet I gotta do the station, and I like, I don't want you to even consider changing anything they propose, but I don't think Mr. Giovanni's doing anything terrible here. And, uh, but that's all I have to say on that.
Kelly?
Yeah, so I just wanna say that I also support all of these causes. Um, I would have voted if it were from the contingency fund because I sat on that grant board and we really discussed every grant that we awarded. And to, for, for one of your amendments, uh, Mr. Giovanni, they didn't even go through the process. Um, and then the other one, they were awarded money, you just want more. If it were going to go through the contingency fund, I would support this, but I do not like giving money away that we don't even have yet.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Craft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
It passes by a vote of six to three.
Thank you. Next, we have adding funding to the stabilization fund, sponsor Mr. Brown. Amendment, um, of taking five million dollars from the, wait, what's it say? It's taking five million dollars and transferring it back into the stabilization fund, and it's coming from the county transfer out fund. Any discussion on the matter? Ms. Keegan?
I would like Mr. Barron to explain to us how this is possible.
Ms. Keegan, if you'll indulge me for a second, first of all, I wanted to, since this is Mr. Brown's amendment, I wanna tell you about my professional staff and how we work very hard to present a balanced budget. And, um, we actually don't feel threatened. My job has not been threatened. I simply said I'm appointed by the county executive, and I would be, um, very disingenuous if I came up in front of county council and undermined the work that this administration has done, the good work this administration has done by cutting taxes when, you know, we've heard Mr. Brown raise taxes and things like that. So I wanna make that very clear. The second thing is, Mr. Brown and his members of county council, okay, at that time passed this ordinance in 2015, was amended in 2018. I didn't agree with it at the time as controller, um, but as director of administration, because I work for the citizens of the county, at the approval of the county executive and the appointment of the county executive, I follow the law. The county executive is very clear, no matter what, we follow the law, we follow the Home Rule Charter, and this is an ordinance of county council. The ordinance calls for between five and fifteen percent of the operating budget of the county, okay? We're at five-point-six percent, we follow the law. Mr. Brown's amendment here, again, cuts five million dollars, okay? In this case, he cuts it out of somewhere in the budget, I don't know where, and puts it back into the emergency stabilization fund. Clearly, there's not five million dollars from the money tree outside that is going back into this emergency stabilization fund. He has not identified a cut. So where does that five million dollars come from?
Well, excuse me, it clearly, no, excuse me, it clearly states in the amendment that he put forward, it's on the very same page in the book, you took the five million and put it in the transfer out fund, he's taking it out of there and putting it back.
But what that does, Ms. Vargo Hefner-
Excuse me, I'm still speaking, so I understand what you're gonna say next is, well, you have that plan to go somewhere.
Absolutely.
So unless if you wanna tell us where you're putting that, 'cause you stated in the last amendment-
The raises are three-point-eight million dollars for non-
So you're using the funds, the stabilization fund for your raises?
Let's call it that, sure, let's call it that.
Okay, well, is that true, or is that what you're just saying tonight?
Oh, I could, I could say it's for another item, if you want me to, that equals that. What, money is fungible, absolutely. So if, if you, if you want to take that five million dollars and put it in the stabilization fund, um, I might not have money to pay the healthcare bill. Um, I might not have, I don't have money to pay the raises, because even taking that five million dollars, I am still short, the county is still short, two million dollars, even if I don't give the raises to the career service, because I have other contractual obligations to the collective bargaining agreements. So that is why the budget, and this, this is actually the two-and-a-half percent that just failed, this is actually worse because that five million dollars could also be for bond funding, okay, bond indebtedness that council has passed and that we are on the hook for in the full faith and credit of Northampton County. So, uh, you know, I take it from the salaries and I don't make a bond payment, that's a problem for the county, and it really calls in the, into, you know, so if Mr. Brown would like to tell me where he wishes to take it from for the stabilization fund, um, and council is willing, but again, our budget stands as proposed because it's good policy. That's where we stand on it.
So is this changing estimates of revenue?
Yes, well, so the emergency stabilization fund is not an estimate of revenue. It is a fund, by the way, the ordinance was written, and, you know, uh, county council wanted to have control of this money, and they read the Home Rule Charter, um, and they realized that they couldn't make a stabilization fund a part of revenue. So it is what we call, um, money that is restricted and reserved. So what that means is it's still part of the fund balance, but because it's restricted and reserved in this revenue fund under county council's purview, that is where, uh, council has a vote. They have a policy, or they have a, have to pass an ordinance or resolution, I forget what the, the ordinance says, but they need to take an action to spend money specifically from that fund, and it needs to be done on a five-four basis. So that's what the ordinance says, so we call that money restricted and reserved, unlike the fund balance that council cannot touch 'cause it goes to the projection of revenue, which is unrestricted, unreserved money.
So taking the money back is changing the estimates of revenue?
Correct. No, no, it's not changing the estimates of revenue, I apologize. It's not changing the estimates of revenue. Um, what it is doing is it is actually taking money that is being used to balance the budget, okay, and putting it into a fund, but not telling me where to cut from, not telling the administration where to cut from. And that's clearly out of bounds. It's like taking five million dollars from a money tree and saying, you know, I wanna just put it in here and say it's there.
Isn't this number three, all funds must remain balanced from the form that you gave us, balanced budget principles?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And isn't this going against the Home Rule Charter, though?
It, so, yes, it is, but again, um, I stood on my head here explaining why the two-and-a-half million was unbalanced because of the special revenue funds. And again, the five million dollars is, in my opinion, a more, say more, I guess I could say more dangerous amendment because, um, it's asking for five million to be placed in a fund, pulling the budget out of balance more than a two-and-a-half percent cut would, and it could affect my ability to pay our debt service, which affects the full faith and credit of the county.
Which is essentially not balanced.
It's like not paying your credit card, yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Brown, I'm gonna ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Gafredo because, you know, you're being very dangerous this evening. Where, if, if you have to take it from somewhere, do you have an idea of where you would take it from?
Well, first of all, the stabilization fund was created for, so there were always emergency reserves, it was changed, and, uh, the fact that eleven-point, eleven million eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is being drawn down out of that fund to balance spending, uh, in a budget that is, as Mr. Gafredo pointed out, bloated at best. Uh, when you go through the fund, there are areas that you could pull it from. Now, Mr. Barron was very eloquent and very careful with his wording, could be, might be, if I can't pay the debt, oh my God, the sky's falling, oh, by the way, it's an emergency 'cause we don't have P-25 radios, it's a crisis going on, oh my God, um, the county always pays its bills. Uh, as far as the five million dollars, I believe the amendment as presented is, is balanced. Uh, nowhere can, uh, in these budget books does it tell me, this is, this is where the stabilization money, the, the eleven-point-eight-five million went. Where did it go? Did it go to debts? I don't know, you can't find it anywhere.
There's tons of transfers in and out, Mr. Brown.
Wait, wait, let him talk.
Uh, you know, if you look at transfer out, there's twenty-two million dollars there, so which particular dollars was it? Don't really know. And I've gone through the budget-
We had four budget hearings, you could have asked.
Mr. Barron, let him talk.
Line item by line item, uh, looking for where these monies actually ended up, and you really can't, uh, tell. So I believe the budget as presented does balance it, and it is up to the fiscal department to, uh, go ahead and rebalance the budget from the funds that council would approve that you can spend.
Madam President?
Yes.
Our, our main cash reserves will be less than, or less than eighteen million dollars left over. We need thirty-and-a-half million dollars again to balance the budget, it's not there. I know Mr. McClure is up for election, it might not be his problem, but what would you suggest the next administration to do if they-
While I have the sound just on my phone, I've just gone to click and we're getting colored lines, so, uh, now we may, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Brown, well, Ms. Barron suggested, Mr. Brown, that his counsel, as opposed to, you know, what, what it did with the bond and tax increase, and I've been confronted at times outside about why I'm not, why I'm not a Mr. McClure councilman. Uh, I can just say, I've never been from nineteen ninety-on, anybody's councilman other than Taxpayer Resident- I mean, to say, I've never been from 1990 on, anybody's councilman other than taxpayer resident councilman. I don't care what party the executive is. I, I know we're in a hyper partisan time now and everybody sees whoever the executive is at every level of government as the leader. You know, whether it's Kim Jong, Trump or Kim Jong Biden or whatever you want to call it. And that, that, you know, it's, it's gotten crazy. But I will say that we all work for the taxpayer. And this plan is directed by Mr. McClure, that technically is his boss. But overall, we're, our bosses live out in the county community. And I, I would say that going forward, everybody should look at these funds. Maybe we could get some subdirection on debt service items versus special revenue items versus things that aren't like that. And I agree with Mr. Barron, actually, he is going to go and look in areas to take it from. And yeah, I mean, he's, he's going to go in areas other than special revenue or debt service. And that could have an impact on others. I'm closed by saying that, you know, I haven't heard this one. A hard rain falls on the judge and then the judge alike. And the problem is that when we want to do these things, we have to be careful because when it's applied, whatever intent was, it's pure as it may have been, you don't know where the impact is going to fall because other people are going to control that. So I'm sorry, I can't support this. Unless we amend the ordinance that had percentages in for the emergency fund. He's right. It, it could take the money and use it for whatever they want. And so that's where I see where I, so that's, I'm going to be looking out, but that's my reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Corpura?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
It fails by a vote of four to five.
Next, we have partially fund P-25 by John Brown, taking money from future grants, ARPA Fiscal Recovery Fund, and moving it into a line item for the P-25 equipment. This was a concern, apparently because it says it wasn't created in a line, but my understanding or the intent was that it would be. Are there any further discussions regarding this? Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment to increase the 775 to the full $1 million that's available in the ARPA Fiscal Recovery Fund for this and have the full $1 million then go to the P-25 equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
It passes by a vote of five to four.
So next, we have the amendment for $1 million to be moved from the ARPA Recovery Fund into funding P-25 radios. Discussion. Call for the vote.
Well, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see you.
I think it's a little, a little short sighted to pull a million dollars from nursing funds for Gracestale to put something into a, the radio fund that when Mr. Weaver told you that what they needed right now, what they were doing, they have enough money and it's funded to get what they're doing for the 3322 corridor. He also explained that the, this little bit of funds isn't going to put a bump into making new sites. And when they make new sites, they're going to have to recalibrate all the radios to work with each other. So I really don't think when the director tells us he doesn't need this money to do this, they kind of wish you would.
The law, so I would support it. And especially since, like, I'm hearing now that we're going to be revisiting a bond and that we're going to be putting the full amount back in, so this would defray the cost of that. So we have every right to do this, and I support doing this.
Can I ask Mr. Barron to come up and?
Mr. Gafredo had his hand up first.
Mr. Kraft, to your point, yes, if it's framed in the sense that this is slated for nurses, it could seem terrible that we're taking money for nurses and putting towards radios. But the fact is, the way Mr. Mrs. Lori Vargo Hefner just described is very accurate. You know, we held this money, it was an ARP money for emergencies, emergency fund. And, you know, depending on what day we caught the administration, the need for the P-25 radios was either a life-threatening emergency or not needed anymore. So it's frustrating to sit here and get information that, you know, depending on what day it is, completely contradicts itself.
Right, and I, I agree with you on that.
So it's like, I'm a little confused myself.
But I think it was, I thought, I heard it was slated for the nurses at Gracestale. I mean, I know Lori just said it's not, that it's slated for whatever we want to slate it to. So I mean, I don't know what it's slated for. If it's for the nurses, I'm not.
It's getting a little confusing, right?
You know what, yeah, it's a little confusing.
It was originally requested for that, I believe it was 2022 at the end of that budget.
Yeah, a long time ago.
And that's where we said, you could have this much, but we're going to keep 100 back. And so since 2022, no one's come forward and taken it for the nurses. So it get, you know, it's in there and it's like everything else we've heard tonight. But I think that the radios are a good use of the money. Because if it hasn't been needed to be expended today, I think there's a lot of money in the Gracestale budget as well.
And as far as the radios go, I, it, it really behooves me to put a 20-year loan on equipment that in 20 years might be needing repairs, needing replacement. I'd rather see us try to find money. And I think this is a very good way of getting a million of that six set aside so that when 2026 does come around and we're ready to start implementing that northern sector, we could actually pay for it with money instead of borrowing away. So for that, for that reason alone, I want to support this because I was hoping to have 4 million in there, but I'll settle for 1.
Did you want to call Mr. Barron?
Yes, I would. Mr. Barron, I heard that if this money isn't spent at the end of the year, we, it gets lost, is that true?
Actually, that's, that's not the case.
Not spent.
Not, no, no, no.
Designated.
Actually, Ms. Vargo Hefner is wrong on both points because our reporting online, our reporting online states that we took this money as revenue replacement. Therefore, we do not have to spend it within a specific period of time. The federal government is going to be clawing back encumbrances that go on beyond two years. That is part of the Affordable Care Act money. And we actually have to certify when we say money is encumbered in our reports, which are all online, you can read, by the way. We have to certify that they will be spent by the end of 2027, I believe. We haven't had to do that because they extended it out to 2027 if the funds are encumbered, okay?
Seems to be a lot of disinformation here.
So I'm, I'm the one who does all the reporting and follows the regulations on this.
And you're the expert, so I trust you.
The, the other, the other thing is, is that we took this as revenue replacement. So we took it as revenue replacement, which means we don't have to encumber it. We had enough revenue loss because of the pandemic based on the formula. It gave council and the administration a great deal of freedom to be able to spend that money. We had originally proposed it to be spent as money on the agency nurses at Gracestale. We did not spend any money on agency nurses at Gracestale, it's all been county tax dollars. The only money we allocated outside of what Gracestale got directly was, I believe, $10 million for retention and recruitment bonuses to hire our own nurses. We still have an agency issue. Gracestale seems to be getting by just fine right now. We never brought it back to this council for the agency nurses because, as you see, it wouldn't have, I, we don't believe it would have passed. So that being the case, the million dollars has been sitting there unallocated. And when I say unallocated, it is literally what resolutions we've agreed to with county council on how to spend this money so that we can actually make decisions, encumber the money, and actually enter into contracts and agreements with people to be able to, you know, spend this money for public health reasons. And God forbid, you know, make sure we're prepared if there's another pandemic.
Can I ask Sue to come up and, and tell us how this might affect Gracestale?
Thank you. We've talked to council about the unfortunate need for increased usage of agency nursing staff at Gracestale, which we've also talked at length, every human services meeting, about the recruitment efforts and attempts to bring in Gracestale staff. I certainly can't predict how quickly that will happen. And so certainly, any money that is allocated for Gracestale would always end up being needed at some point. And I would anticipate at some point that money would be needed for agency nursing as it was originally requested with the ARP money.
So what I heard, though, is it wasn't allocated for that. It's, it was alloc, it was written up as revenue replacement, you said, Mr. Barron, correct? And I, and my other question is, or maybe, I didn't ask a question, you just said that because I took a note on it. So my question now is, did you come to council and ask us to designate that 1 million as revenue replacement?
Absolutely, and I don't remember if council voted, but it was not passed. I don't know if it was tabled at the time, I don't know if they, they voted on it. But yes, we specifically asked for a million dollars for agency nursing. We had actually asked for resolutions from council. The administration engaged council on, on all the ARP money. And we put forward a resolution that put it all out there. And council either tabled it or voted no, I don't remember the history of that. But that's what we had originally brought it forward for, and it has sat in, in that particular org. And when I say revenue replacement, what I mean is the technical reporting term.
That's what you put in your ARPA fund report to the federal.
Correct, and what that basically means is, is that after 2026, which is when all ARPA funds must be encumbered, okay? Very different, spent, encumbered. That being the case, we don't have to report it anymore, we can close out the funds because our funds would be gone.
What bothers me is that this is a million dollars. And my understanding is anything over $100,000 needs to come to council for approval. So this is just, we need and we're gonna. And, you know, I understand that, that you're the expert, but it's disturbing to me that there is a lack of transparency and communication. And it's becoming more and more glaring. I'm speaking.
I put everything in the budget. But no, no, hold on, you, you have cast an aspersion on.
No, 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 you are gavelled, and you will stop. This is our time, you and Lamont could do whatever you want in your, in your own room. I'm speaking, and this is our meeting. I am tired of you not coming to council for things and having your own deals and your own commercials. I'm done. I'm going to call for the vote.
Comments are over.
I, I called for the vote, Ron.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
It passes by a vote of five to four.
That is all for the amendments. Now, the motion is to pass. Be it. Tell me how you want to do it, and I'll call it.
So moving forward, the amendments that are being considered for the next resolution is the Bathborough 150th, the, excuse me, that was banger. The Bath Generator, the Columbia Fire Tools, and the $1 million should go toward the P-25 project.
So.
This is a vote to put into the budget, these amendments into the budget. Okay, I just want to make sure I'm following procedure. Thank you.
Any further, yes, sir.
So this, this vote, it's for all the things you mentioned. They're not being voted on individually, they're, they're combined or packaged. Yes, put them all in, no, doesn't put them all in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It only votes on the ones that we've passed forward.
So this would amend the budget with only the ones that were adopted here tonight at this meeting, those four amendments. So this is a vote to amend the budget with those four budget amendments.
Call for the vote. Sponsor? Giovanni? Capora's second.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
It is adopted by a vote of six to three.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the proposed 2025 Northampton County budget as amended be adopted, is that the correct language? You need an introduction?
Let me just have somebody read that resolution.
JP?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following 2025 county budgets incorporated by reference here too shall be adopted as amended this fifth day of December 2024. One, the general fund, two, the special revenue funds, and three, the capital project funds. I'm ready, one.
Yep. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
It's adopted by a vote of seven to two.
Thank you. Next, we have the adoption of the 2025 Capital Improvements Plan. Mr. Warren, will you introduce?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the proposed 2025 Northampton County Capital Improvements Plan shall be adopted on this fifth day of December 2024.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the adoption of the 2025 Real Estate Tax Millage Rate Ordinance. Mr. Kraft and Giovanni introduced this at the November 21st meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Any discussion of council? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we end old business, I would like to untable Commissioner Kraft's appointment to the GPA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Um, pardon me?
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of seven to two.
Is there any other old business to discuss? Ken, your old business. New business, consideration of county detective terms. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on him now. I'm sorry.
I apologize. That was for the mo, to un, motion to untable. So, now we're voting for the resolution if you want to pass that.
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their reappointment as indicated hereafter. General Purpose Authority, Kenneth M. Kraft, term to expire 12/30/30. How old are you? Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Next, we have, oh wait, any other old business to discuss? New business, consideration.
Yes.
Yes, I, I didn't necessarily support what Mr. Brown did at the end for all the reasons I've mentioned in the past. But because it was bundled in with Mr. Giovanni, I, I voted yes to the overall amendment. Unfortunately, I, I had, I wanted to save Mr. Giovanni, even though I had not planned to vote for Mr. Brown. So, I just want, because of the way it was laid out, I, I felt I had no choice. But I just wanted to make that clear so it's understood. And I also want to say that, on the budget, I agree with Harry Truman. When he was not, he distrusted experts all the time. And he said that he believed an expert was somebody who's afraid to learn anything new because then they wouldn't be an expert anymore. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have under new business, consideration of county detective term sheet agreement resolution. Ken, will you introduce this? Detective term sheet. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have consideration of the district attorney's position request resolution. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Assistant District Attorney pay grade CE-GRII-I-1A salary $67,828 in the office of the district, in the office of the district attorney shall be upgraded to pay grade CE-GRII-I-3C salary $74,070 effective December 9, 2024.
Any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan? Mr. Kraft? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have a resolution, a consideration of approval and acceptance of funds through the local share account resolutions, Lafayette College. Mr. Gafredo, will you introduce?
Are you trying to catch me sleeping? I got it. Whereas, now therefore be resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting requests for a statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $425,000 from the CFA to complete the Easton-Palmer Forks Regional Multimodal Trail Project, design and planning project. The requested funds will be used to enhance publicly accessible trail connectivity between the city of Easton and Forks Township, extending from the southern side of the Lafayette College campus to the college's massacre fields in Forks Township. The expanded trail network will establish a multimodal transportational system that strengthens the city campus transitions, provides new trail access for township residents, fosters community engagement, supports economic development, and promotes solutions for green transportation. Additionally, this project aligns with local county and college sustainability and development goals, contributing to healthier and more resilient communities. Be it further resolved that the county, Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the CFA to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant and that the director of Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have New Bethany, Inc. Ms. Keegan, will you introduce?
Whereas, the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, Act 2004-71, as amended, provides for the distribution of gaming revenues through the Commonwealth Financing Authority to support projects in the public interest within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, New Bethany, Inc., and Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development have prepared all the documentation necessary to submit a request for this funding, naming the county of Northampton as the eligible guarantee and pass-through entity. And now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for the statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $500,000 from the CFA from planning and design costs, engineering costs, broadband installation, equipment, and construction costs for the New Bethany South Side Drop-In Center expansion project, which will provide street-level human services to Bethlehem and Northampton County's most under-resourced constituents. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the CFA to facilitate and assist in obtaining and the requested grant and that the director of Northampton County, DCED, is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of the 2025 County Council, oh no, wrong, wrong, wrong. Consideration approving the formal request for a Main Street Matters Program Grant on behalf of Arts Quest Resolution. Mr. Warren, will you introduce?
Yes, Madam President. Now there, now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request as the eligible applicant on behalf of Arts Quest for an NSM Program Grant in the amount of $1 million to redevelop the 150-year-old Bethlehem Steel Turn and Grind Shop into a dynamic multi-use education exhibit and festival venue to support residents and small businesses in downtown cores and surrounding neighborhoods. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton, that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant and that the director of Northampton County, DCED, is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Ms. Hilgert is here. And since you graciously waited through Family Feud this evening, if you would like to say a few words, you're welcome to. I know we want to get done, but, you know.
God bless you.
You've been patient as a saint. So, there you go.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I will not go through the entire presentation. I think it was summarized in the application. But the Turn and Grind Shop is a 150-year-old steel building, was originally used to turn and grind steel for Navy ships. In the day, it will serve a number of valuable uses for us. In the first quarter of each year, it will allow us to host educational and artistic exhibits, traveling exhibits. For instance, if you think about the, the recent Van Gogh immersive exhibit that was in Philadelphia, could have been housed in this building. Then, once we move into April to July, we have a number of private events at the Arts Quest Center, which is critical earned revenue for us to support our mission of offering half of our programming for free. But when we're doing a private event in the Music Fest Cafe, we're not doing concerts. Now, we can move some of these private events over to the Turn and Grind, which allows us to expand our mission and the number of programs we offer each year. This would be an expansion of Music Fest, Oktoberfest, and Chris Killam Art, which is currently going on. And we are seeing attendance levels at a capacity higher than last year so far as we get into the third weekend, which was a record year for us last year. So, in consideration of all that you have to do tonight, I will pause there. The sum, the summation of the application is in the presentation you have in front of you and happy to entertain any questions.
Quick comment?
Sure.
If you don't mind, Arts Quest continuously does such an amazing job in what they have done for the local economy, not just in Bethlehem, but Northampton County. It never ceases to amaze me, Hilgert. And I'll be very much looking forward to voting.
Well, the county has always been a leader in the support and you've led the way in encouraging private sector support. So, I appreciate that very much.
Uh, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to support this. I think I've seen what's been done down there. As a member of the RDA, I've been involved to a certain extent. And so, I plan to support it. But given the fact that she was willing to sit through two and a half hours of, of this nonsense, I will definitely be supporting it. Thank you.
And if you'd like to come back in the future and do a nicer presentation at the very, very beginning, I'm happy to entertain that.
I appreciate that, Chair.
At your leisure. Anything else? Call for the vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of the 2025 County Council Meeting Schedule Resolution. Mr. Korpora, will you introduce?
A lot of words here. All right. Resolved by Northampton County Council that in accordance with Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 206A, Northampton County Council organizational meeting will be held on Monday, January 6, 2025, and will begin immediately following the swearing and ceremony in the third floor meeting room, number 3116, Northampton County Government Center, 669 Washington Street, Easton, PA. And two, the regular schedule of meetings for the 2025 year shall be conducted on the first and third Thursdays of each respective month, beginning at 6:30 PM prevailing time, in the third floor meeting room. Let's see here. The meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 2, 2025 is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, January 9, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Thursday, January 16, 2025 is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, January 23, 2025, at 6:30 PM.